All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please let us know. You can step to the podium and ask for permission. I'll introduce the board up here. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. Next in is Scott Peterson, a voting member. And to my right is Frank Duppie, the clerk. I'm Suzanne Murphy, the chair. To my left is James Moss, the vice chair. To his left is Tony Pichucci, an associate. And on his left is Nick Haney. And we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and then Ashley DeMello, office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing of the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments will be limited to two minutes and will be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record audio for FCT. Viewers, any person tonight wishing to make a public statement of something that is not on the agenda is able to come up for two minutes to speak, but the board will not comment. Is there anybody that needs a public statement? This is litter for not pertaining to any -- you can come up, but not pertaining to anything Not pertaining to anything on the agenda. I'm going to read your letter tonight. I'm going to read your letter that you submitted tonight, but later on, when we get to that hearing, I will read it out loud.
Oh, okay.
Okay? All right, let's start off. First on the agenda, we have 17 Walker. And we have a request from the applicant for continuation. I will take a motion from anybody on that.
Will you move?
Is proposed, Madam Chairman?
Is our date?
December 5th.
December 5th.
Do we need a discussion?
Do we need an extension form?
Not at this time.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to continue to December 5, 2024, at the request of the applicant.
And we have discussion.
We'll need a second.
We'll need a second. Frank, you want a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Tony.
I'm just curious if we're extending this. Is the 180-day period extended as well, or is it just being extended?
So...
I mean, we don't have much time left on these things, do we?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I mean typically what I would recommend is that as part of the extended hearing, we would add the 30 days on to the end of the 180 so that if you need them, you've got that time because you didn't use this meeting.
This is an applicant request.
So we'll get the 30 days.
I would suggest that you need to consent to it, but I don't think it's unreasonable.
I'll sit over here. Any questions?
Could I speak to that, Madam Chair?
I would say that would only be fair.
Certainly.
For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan. I represent the applicant. The request was to November 21st, where we thought there might be some availability on the agenda. Still is sufficient time. I'm not sure that an additional 30-day extension...
I know we just moved three last week to November 21st, so I think November 21st is...
You have, I think, five cases on...
There's five already, yeah.
By rights and to make it fair, it would be the extension would be the amount of time between today and whenever it is.
Okay.
So whatever that date may be, that would should be the...
All right, well, just for the record, I mean, the reason for it is the architectural review, which is taking longer, and the architects are working together. But, you know, just so the board knows, the hearing was open June 29th, I believe, and the architectural review wasn't ordered for two months. So we were delayed two months because of that. So, you know, we're in the peer review, but, you know, to be delayed another 30 days, I mean, I guess if we don't have a choice, we don't have a choice. But I think that these are affordable housing projects. We are in a housing crisis. I think that there should be some try to make some accommodation for these projects to move them along.
I think the architect peer review spoke without even having a contract. So I think we did rush that. I know we rushed that part along. So it's not like we're lollygagging over here. We're doing the best we can. We're pretty jammed.
I know. I just think it's important that it did take two months to get the contract produced from the opening of the hearing, so...
And he spoke before the contract.
Well, he came on the 9th, and he was under contract by then. So, anyway, just for the record...
We're doing the best we can.
Did you get the consent?
Are we getting the 30 days or not?
Yeah.
You have the consent.
Yes. So all those on continuation to December 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
All right, next we have West Falmouth Estates. And we just received, I just was handed mine right now, the plans. And we have a policy for seven days ahead for the plans. So I don't know what anyone else up here feels about that.
I would like to say that we disallowed Attorney Clower for the same reasons last week, and for us to treat any other applicant differently would certainly justifiably raise the ire of Attorney Clower. I don't see how we can do anything but remain consistent.
Our policy here, I don't know this gentleman's name, but our policy here is seven days ahead. You had the peer review September 24th, and here we are, four weeks later almost. And our policy is seven days.
Madam Chair, if I might add, not to the detriment of this applicant, but we also did receive yesterday something of import, and certainly that carried some weight from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. I was able to read it last night, not read it, review it, not read it. I haven't had enough time to absorb it, and I think it absolutely has a bearing on this application and for us, for those two reasons, for us not to allow ourselves the proper time to properly review everything is, again, would be inconsistent to how we acted last week.
I agree. Anybody else have a comment up here?
I agree with Mr. Fineran.
I agree with Mr. Fineran about late submissions, and I think that there needs to be something, because it's just getting out of hand. The only thing, point that I'd make, I'd argue this, is that I believe that was a special permit that the previous, that Mr. Clower was expecting a vote that night. This is certainly not, I would not be even thinking about entertaining a vote on this project, given a late submission. I don't know, Madam Chairman, if there's anything that they want to put in that we consider even listening to or not, but it would, I agree with Mr. Fineran, we need time to digest the material, especially if the applicant's putting stuff in late. But in terms of the late submissions, I wouldn't even consider anything that came in late. If there's other things that came in, then I think that the applicant, given that we're not taking a vote on anything tonight, should be allowed to make a presentation. That's my two cents.
Anybody else think we should continue with a presentation?
I think that that is splitting hairs.
It's an entirely different type of project.
We want to remain consistent. We should remain consistent. And if we want to gain control of this and stop these constant lapses in our, I mean, we have to be consistent.
I haven't read it. I didn't even read Buzzards Bay either.
I haven't...
The only concern I have is we have 180 days, and the applicant could sit back and say, "I'm not giving an extension," in which case we're going to have to make a decision.
Didn't we let Mr. Clower last week continue it for a very short period of time, like seven days, next week, or?
Yes.
It was like two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
I don't know if we can do that now, but I only received the submission at 5 o'clock tonight.
That's when I got mine.
I have not seen it.
No, I haven't either, and I don't like coming in blind to hearings at all. I agree with Mr. Fineran about the principle of this wholeheartedly, but I don't like kicking significant projects like this down the road, when we might be able to get something out of it or take some type of information or get some testimony that would be relevant.
If I could just interject, I guess. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers, representing the applicant for the project. We in no way expected you to have any review or input or decision-making tonight at all on the information you just got. The purpose of coming tonight was really to just explain to you or introduce to you the revised plans and how we addressed the peer review comments and introduced the new submission to you, which was a revised set of plans, calculations, response letter and that. We honestly didn't expect you to have any input or review or comments to us or decisions at all. So I just, we understand the seven-day period, but we just wanted to get it into your hands as soon as we could, not to have any kind of decision on your part at this meeting, so...
You've had the information for three and a half weeks from peer review.
Yes.
I've made notes and notes and notes on this peer review. It's not going to be like a quick, you know, five minutes on this at all, I don't think. I know I have many minutes.
And that's just not the way I digest information.
No, I mean, that's understood. We don't expect you to digest it in an afternoon.
The rules are there. They're in the application. Everyone should know it, and it appears that they don't. And this is a continual and repeating thing, and it just has to end.
Noreen, what's your guidance?
Well, while I appreciate what the board is saying, you have a couple of unique circumstances here in that, one, this is a comprehensive permit application, and you also have abutters that are interested. And so I would almost suggest, even for their purposes, for the engineering firm to at least walk through verbally what their changes are so that the abutters are aware.
So just stick to the plan, then? The plan and nothing else?
And then we have to let abutters speak too, though.
But just limit it to the plan. I really don't want to lose this time.
Okay.
Because I think what's going to happen at the end, we're going to get jammed up, and then we're going to really regret it.
We're already jammed up due to their...
Madam Chair.
Taking their time.
This, why, just as in the last case, why should we be the ones losing time when the applicant did not comply? And for us to bend the rules, the next one's going to ask us to bend the rules, and the one after that? We really have to get this under control.
I do agree.
And I mean, just like the last one, Ms. Moynihan's, whatever amount of time it is, and I'm not adverse to staying until 10:30 or whatever, but we have to be reasonably prepared, as well as the applicant. And these half-measures, I just, I don't agree with.
We are definitely going to need an extension. If we, even if we hear tonight on the plans, we are going to need an extension.
Correct.
How much time left?
That's understood.
I think drop dead is November 12th.
Currently, yes.
How could this not be added to the drop dead?
We want to be able to do it.
Because they didn't comply with the rules in the application. I mean, this time absolutely should be added on to the drop dead.
But they have to sign their consent.
So they signed it.
So we're going to need an extension. I don't know if you want to come up and address that.
Yeah, Robert Pena, 19 North Farm Highway. Before we address it, this guideline that we're talking about, seven days, I wasn't aware that it was hard and fast, but does that pertain?
It's what?
Does that pertain to all submissions?
All submissions.
So...
Unless it's an abutter.
Unless it's an abutter.
The applicant submissions.
Does it pertain to, like the Buzzards Bay Coalition just submitted something to?
No, it doesn't pertain to abutters.
Well, they're not an abutter.
Only the applicant.
They're not an abutter.
It doesn't pertain to anyone else but the applicant.
Okay. Okay, what do I need to wrap this up? What am I going to do?
Right here. It's a signature I need. It's heavy. I have a pen.
I have two, but I'll come off.
Thank you.
So what date are we at now, Noreen?
What is the date we have, Noreen?
So we're proposing to extend to December 5th.
December 5th.
I don't see any information. Do you want a photo first?
Sure.
Is that already on here, Noreen?
You need to probably fill in December 5.
Fill it, December 5?
It needs to be filled out?
She said I just have to write December 5 in.
You, Madam Chairman, have questions, and Noreen, does that mean that night we are going to have to close, render a decision on December 5?
No, so I would, this is December 5th, right? First of all, right. So what we would minimally be asking for would be a minimum of 30 days extension on to the 180. So if it currently expires...
November 12.
Right, November 12. You would be going to December 12, which is post your next meeting. So what it would say is you have your next meeting, and if you feel you need to extend again, we would extend as we go.
And if the applicant were to refuse?
Then you have to close.
I think we, I'm happy to have the extension, but I don't want to lose this time.
Do you want this whole package?
Yeah. It weighs a lot. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question? What would you expect to accomplish tonight? What would you like to accomplish tonight?
I think we'll hear the changes he made to the plans, and we'll have the abutters hear them. And then we'll probably do peer review. I don't know if we can even tackle peer review. The peer review was a lot...
So we won't be able to, because the peer did not get the plan changes. So there's not been any communication.
There's been no communication.
So they will have to work with the peer and discuss the changes they've made and discuss the checklist that the peer provided.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to suggest that anything that we might gain tonight by listening to a portion of this would surely be made up if we were all, as board members, to show up at the next meeting completely prepared. I don't see any gain from doing this piecemeal, and other than to show other applicants that their freedom not abide by the simple rules that we put forth in the application.
I don't understand the reason for the delay either.
So maybe what you need to do is if there's some disagreement about whether the board's proceeding or not, perhaps the board should vote about whether you want to entertain. There's obviously, they have their engineer here tonight.
Want to make a motion, Mark?
I make a motion that we continue to December 5.
Second.
But hearing nothing tonight.
Hearing nothing tonight.
And you're seconding.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's important that the board could at least hear what's proposed. It gives additional time to digest what the proposal is, to look at the plans, let the abutters weigh in or what their concerns are, which, again, could allow the board to have a more deliberative and informed process. I don't like the fact that plans come in late. I'm just as frustrated as other members of this board, but this is, we're not making a vote tonight. It just, we've gotten our extension. I think it's still important to have some type of meaningful hearing this evening.
In counter to that, I like to be prepared to hear what they have to say, because oftentimes I find things that I question and have questions about, and I, as a board member, I have not had that opportunity. And these late submissions are just, they have to stop.
But you would get the opportunity later at the next hearing.
Yeah, but then I'd be prepared. I'm not prepared tonight.
But you're still going to have the opportunity to ask questions, though.
It's kind of cart before the horse, in my mind. I'm sorry, that's just the way my mind works. Others may not work that way, but...
Well, we have a motion and a second. I guess we're either going to go forward or not.
Just wanted to ask for any further, yeah, any further discussion before we vote? Tony?
No.
All right, all those in favor of having no discussion with the applicant tonight and just continuing to December 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I think 3-2? To, yay, to continue. Correct?
So no testimony?
No, yes, testimony.
Yes, testimony.
Yes. All right, so we're moving forward.
Go ahead, sir. You're up. All right. Well, like I indicated earlier, we'd just like to introduce changes to the plan that we were working on over the last several weeks to address the peer review comments. What we have resubmitted to you is a revised set of subdivision plans, eight drawing sheets, a revised stormwater drainage analysis to go along with those. There was a response letter completed, which identified the comments from Beals and Thomas, and our written response to those items. And then an exceptions list was revised based on the peer review comments also. In addition to that, revised landscape plan... Just a quick question. You don't have this electronically for folks at home, or? I didn't bring an electronic copy. I don't know. We submitted electronically, but don't have an electronic copy. Again, we understood, we're just kind of introducing the revised plan, so. There was also revised landscape plan submitted to help address the...
Can we have your name, please?
Oh, sure. Yeah, Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That revised landscape plan was from Hock Design, and they also submitted a brief response letter to some of the landscape-type comments that were in the peer review.
Where do people at home get this?
Chicken butter.
Oh, okay.
The new information is posted on the website. We didn't only receive it today, so there wouldn't have been...
I meant for people like sitting at home.
For anybody to look at it ahead. But following this meeting, people can access this through our webpage.
Okay.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
You know, again, every revised submission, all the plans are revised dated 10/15. So when you're reviewing documents, that's the latest date of all the revisions of everything. The Hock Design landscape letter and plan was dated 10/9. Just to give you reference of, because I know there's been several submissions of this project, the 10/15 drawings and plans and calc's are, that's the latest date of everything. So to run through just briefly the changes that we made to the drawings to address the peer review comments, I'm not going to go through each and every single peer review comment and how we addressed it. That's identified in the letter that we provided. I will say that a number of the comments, we had no response because we basically said we were deferring to the board, to the zoning board, in terms of whether or not a specific waiver was to be granted. So there was a lot of responses in our, in our letter that basically said, "Yeah, understood. We'll defer that to the board's decision." Several other comments related to definitive subdivision plans, which our response to those is that, yes, we understand that that item, particular item, or those particular calculations are needed, but we defer and do those when we do a definitive subdivision plan. As you know, during the comprehensive permit process for a subdivision like this, we're required to do preliminary subdivision plans. And that's what we've submitted to you in accordance with your regulations. There are certain items on a definitive subdivision plan where you get into a lot more detailed engineering and calculations that are necessary at this point in time. So we had a few comments in the peer review that related to a definitive plan that we basically said, "Yep, understood. We'll do those, but we're going to do those at a later date when we get to the definitive plan stage." But changes that we did make on our preliminary plans had to do with the design of the profile, the road profile. There was comments regarding the entrance not being graded in 2% of a slope, and we've met that requirement now. We've provided 100-foot vertical curves, adjusted the stationing. So a lot of the plan and profile drawing has been changed to address those comments. Other issues on just the layout itself, as you notice, it's probably, it's very similar or basically the same as what you've seen before. We've added some minor details to it to address comments, such as, you know, a street sign at the entrance, sight distance triangle at the entrance to prove that we're meeting the sight distance requirements. We've also added some car symbols and some dimensions on the driveways to clarify that we do provide the required two spaces per lot or per unit, plus six additional car spaces for visitors. So we clarified that on the drawings. There's also been some revisions to the drainage system, which resulted from the comments on the calculations. Again, minor in nature, as you can see, the plan that we provided here is basically, looks very similar to what you saw in the last several hearings. We did have to add several underground infiltration systems further up the road to address some of the drainage comments and the increased runoff amounts, but those have been added to the drawings also. We did add a few notes related...
Madam Chair, I'm just point of order. I apologize. I apologize. May I ask just a question for clarification? You're talking about things I'm now scrambling to find on the plan. And you refer, it would be helpful if you would refer to the plan you're talking about and the page of that plan. For instance, you said... And the page of that plan. For instance, it says site engineering. If that's what you're on right now, just talk about it, because I can't find the engineering you're talking about.
Well, for instance, the site distance triangles, that's on sheet three. Right at the entrance, we've shaded the areas where you can see where we've provided over 300 feet of, of site distance in accordance with the ASHTO design criteria for, for North Falmouth Highway.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a point. This is exactly why I objected to this, because I like to be prepared. I do not like to play catch-up. And that's exactly what we're going to do to every one of these points. And it doesn't allow us a fair and honest review of, a fair and educated review of this. I mean, the rules are the rules.
The fact that we can't even see it on the screen is not good either.
So if the board is... Again, I'm just trying to explain what the changes are, not to have any input or comments on it.
If the board is interested, where we just got these plans late and we're not able to access them through the screen, we could go upstairs and put them on a USB drive and bring them down. So if you want to just continue to have a conversation for a little while and then we can actually put the plans up.
So we can go backwards and look at what he's already stated.
Isn't this like the applicant's job to present to us?
This is going to come back and bite us.
You bet it is.
Just saying.
I'm wondering.
Let me just pull it up through the email, you can send it.
Did you go through this?
Did you go through this?
When I found out what was with submission, it was like, it's all been, it's, yeah, it's no change.
So for example, the side triangle, one, using the side triangles here.
We were able to pull up the drawings, if you will, to, to show you at least on the drawings where the information is, I guess that we're changing. So on the site distance triangles, those are located right where the cursor is now on sheet, on sheet three. The car symbols are also shown on this particular drawing also, and all the driveways and parking areas.
On which sheet is the parking?
It's on sheet three, on the same drawing.
I don't see where it shows. Oh, I see the cars, okay.
Can you point to it? It's all these, one of them look more queer.
It's only on sheet three.
Okay. So yeah, these, each driveway here.
Underneath the house?
No, to the side.
Thank you, I have it, thank you.
And we also added a note on the upper corner here, just basically saying that, you know, the patios, decks, sheds, other ancillary structures on each lot would be, could be located if, as determined by the building commissioner at some point. So I know there was comments earlier that were brought up about, you know, are any of these lots going to have sheds or patios or other things like that? And we basically covered that with a general note, because at this point in time, on a preliminary stat, preliminary plan like this, we don't know exactly which units or houses are going to have sheds or decks or anything like that. So we would leave that, or request that that would be left up to the building commissioner at the time when we're pulling building permits for each of these lots. We'll have to do an individual plot plan of each lot and submit that to the building commissioner when we go for a building permit. At that point in time, if there's a shed or patio or something on that, we just wanted to make sure that that's covered in your comprehensive permit, that those type of issues would be resolved by the building commissioner. So we added a note up in that corner, up on the right-hand side.
You're already over 50% structure coverage, 75% impervious as of, as of that plan.
Right.
Without any stairs or whatever you wrote on here.
Right. But what we did to...
That's the sheds, decks, patios.
Right. So what we did in terms of increasing the impervious coverage on the lot is we enhanced our drainage system to be able to handle those impervious items. So we've added some square footage to our calculations to make sure that any runoff generated by a shed or something that's put on the property, this could be handled by the drainage system.
How much did you add?
We added 350 square feet to each lot. So a typical 10-by-10 shed is 100 square feet. We just tripled that to make it 350 square feet.
And you understand about the placements of the sheds? Were they that big?
Yeah, well, again, when we look at each individual lot on that, on, when we're pulling a building permit, we'll determine, does a shed fit on this lot within setbacks and within requirements? And we'll, if it does, and the client wants the shed on that lot, we'll put one in. If it doesn't meet setbacks, if there's no room on it, on that lot, we won't be able to. And we'll leave that decision up to the building commissioner. Okay. Mark, you have a question?
So you propose to put on the building commissioner's lap, well, first off, let me, are all of these lots going to be able to accommodate a shed?
I would say probably no. So the building commissioner would see that.
So will all the affordable units be able to accommodate a shed?
Haven't looked at it in that level of detail yet.
Is there details that would be...
But the idea is that we've, if we, if we can fit a shed on the property, the drainage system will handle it.
There's, there's other considerations in my mind, but at this point, you're not able to answer my question, so.
So any, basically, if you wanted a slide up to these, sheet five.
Can you enlarge that at all?
Sheet five or something?
Yeah, this one here.
Might be helpful to the audience if you could.
I can, I can large it if I download it as a PDF, yeah.
Will that plus or minus as the bar mark?
The top right-hand corner, those three dots, doesn't that allow you to accommodate?
Nope.
Yeah, so you can go up to 150.
Good, thanks. Thank you.
I'm a real techie.
Yeah. We got a 19 department up here.
That's all you got, though.
No erasers.
Earlier in my presentation, I had mentioned the, some changes to the plan and profile drawing, so that's sheet six, which you have in front of you here.
Wait, you have a question?
Yeah.
Frank has a question.
You said you added 300 square feet to your calculations, but where do these 300 square feet come from? On a thin air?
There, it's an arbitrary number based on figuring that if they wanted to put a patio or a shed, that, that type of, that would be less than 350 square feet.
So you increased the capacity of your drainage by, to accommodate 350 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't clear.
That may or may not be ever built. So it's oversized, I guess, is the way of explaining it.
Okay, what are we looking at on page six?
Page six, I, I mentioned earlier, one of the other changes to the drawings is the, is on the plan and profile drawing to address some comments from the peer review engineer. And mainly at the entrance to the, to the subdivision, there's a comment regarding having the profile be a 2% maximum for the first 100 feet. And we've revised the profile to make sure we're meeting that 2% requirement in your subdivision regulations. We've also increased the length of each of the vertical curves on the, on the profile to 100 feet minimum based on your, getting your subdivision regulations. We've also added labels to the right and left sidelines and the existing center lines in accordance with your regulations, and also added some labels of the existing and proposed grades at the, at the lower part of the profile, just again, comments to, that the plant, peer reviewer had. The stationing of the center line also goes around the cul-de-sac now. That's, was a request of your peer review engineer, so we've revised the, the stationing in that area there. So those are the, I guess, are the drainage systems, if you could, four? Yep. We've added two drainage systems on, on these two lots here, lots seven and 16, to handle some of the runoff from the cul-de-sac, basically, just to address comments on the drainage system, on the drainage calculations. The drainage calculations, we increased the runoff values based on your, your regulations, the extreme climate, Northeast Regional Climate Center, extreme values. So instead of, I think we had used seven and a half inches for a 100-year storm on our original calculations, where now we're using 8.7 inches for the 100-year storm. So because of that, the drainage systems had to be revised and increased in size. So those incorporated some additional drainage systems right there. And the one at the base of the subdivision there just got a little bit larger to accommodate that additional runoff. Mark has a question, please.
You use, you did these calculations relative to the size of this property, correct?
Yes, the watershed, that's not only on this property, but the budding, those that are coming onto it, yes.
Well, I, I recall that in a previous hearing, the applicant testified that not only does he take the runoff from his property, he takes the runoff from Wild Harbor Estates, from the highway below, and from the neighbors to the east as well. And knowing, well, assuming that this is all rock ledge, it, I, I question all of this because you're, you're taking a heck of a lot more runoff on that property than just the property itself. And with, with the preponderance of ledge in that vicinity, I just, and like I said, I haven't had time to look at this, and I don't, I mean, and I don't like this at all. I really like to look at things, but that's a huge question mark in my mind. And also, that relates to the performance of the septic as well. And it also relates, because this thing is going to work like an artesian well. And I mean, gravity is going to push the water, whether it be septic or drain water, out like squeezing a pumpkin scene, all in the direction of Herringbrook and, like I said, I just haven't had enough chance to review everything.
All right, that's understood. And I believe your, your peer review engineer, he's, he's the engineer that'll be running through the numbers on us and, and reviewing the watershed boundaries, curve numbers, everything we've used, the soils information, the, the design of all these basins is, is under his purview. He did have some initial comments that we're, we believe we've addressed with this revised submission. And again, some of them resulted in an increased size of the basins and adding some additional stormwater measures to the, to the plan just to address those initial comments. So we feel we've addressed him, but again, he'll, I'm sure before the next hearing, he'll have time to, hopefully have time to review the, the submission and provide further input on that. We'll continue to work with him and, and resolve any issues like that prior to the next hearing. If he has any other additional comments, we'll try to take care of those before we're in front of you again.
When you said continue to work with him, there has been work with him?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah, we've been in touch with the peer review engineer, and we've submitted this information to him. So that's, we'll just basically try to get things resolved in that area so that you, any questions someone might have regarding the actual runoff amounts and everything, we'll, you'll have your peer reviews, compliance with that. He'll, he'll basically be saying, yes, they're good or bad, and we'll either address them or we'll try to work with them as best we can over the next several weeks.
Yeah, that's critical, right, Rich? I mean, when you're looking at these 57 items, and we have a fair amount of them, understood, defer to the board.
Right.
You understand the time crunch that we're under and the applicant's under. So
Sure.
The more that you and the peer reviewer can chat with each other prior to our next meeting and resolve as many of these open items is beneficial pretty much to everybody.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So on the drawings, I guess, that's pretty much the changes on the drawing. Like I mentioned, right in the front of the property, there's going to be a street sign. We've added that, and then we've provided some handicap ramp details, typical stuff like that on, on the last set of drawings of the, of the submission. So as I mentioned earlier, the exceptions list has also been revised. There's been some items on there that we took off based on the comments from the, from the peer reviewer. As a, for instance, we were requesting a waiver of the 10% slope, maximum road slope requirement. We're committing, and our design is based on a 10%, so we, we took that off the, off the exceptions list. We're not asking for any relief on that or any waivers of that. We're, we're reading your requirements there, so that was removed from the, from the list. Again, I don't know if you wanted me to go through each item that we did change or leave that up to the, the peer reviewer to, to get through, but I'd be happy to go through this list and explain whatever minor changes we did make to it.
I think we need to get the peer review this plan ASAP.
Mm-hmm.
Like we needed it ASAP last week, but I think he needs it now.
Do you want, do you want any of us to tell you things I, I need on the plan? I mean, I think that's what we're here for, right?
I didn't know if you want to. No open space is shown. And I need to see where the guest parking is too?
On top of the septic or drainage? There's parking right at the entrance there.
Okay, six spots, you said?
There's three spots there, and there's three spots at the end of the cul-de-sac right there.
So six total, okay.
In addition to the two on each, on each, two minimum on each of the, of the lots.
He also commented on the shared septics?
Yes. We basically are...
Not going to share anymore, I hope?
There is, it's a combination. As we originally proposed, there's going to be some lots, it looks like four, one, two, three, four, five, six lots will have their own individual septic systems. And then there'll be a septic system on the upper level right there that will handle some of the lots at the cul-de- some of the lots at the cul-de-sac. And then there'll be another shared system at the entrance. So, it's a combination of some individual and some common.
Mark, go ahead.
Knowing that this whole septic issue with the DEP is very fluid, if you pardon the pun, have you left enough space and enough elevation in these systems to accommodate future D-nite, if it were so prescribed? Doesn't appear, just looking at it.
For the...
All of them.
Common systems, a denitrification system would basically be an additional tank, for instance, so...
Yeah, between the two, is there enough distance?
Yeah, there's probably room at the entrance, and at the rear common system. For, on the individual lots, we'd have to look at those individually for those six slots, to see if there's room to meet setbacks for that tank, and put an additional tank in. I can, we can look at that in more detail for the next meeting.
Because, especially relative to the affordable units, it's a great concern of mine that this board could potentially put someone into an affordable house, and then take them out again. And there's no way that I ever want that to happen. So, I think it's only prudent that such accommodations are made site-wide, because nobody knows what's coming down the road. And we have received some conflicting facts, if you will. And again, I haven't had ample chance to study it, but it certainly does appear that way. And again, nobody knows, like I said, it's very fluid. Nobody knows what's coming down from the DEP. And according to the information we've received, well, I received last night, at about quarter at 12, you know, Herring Brook is compromised. And one would have to have some considerable information to convince me that this is not going to add to that, especially in lieu of all the other informations we've received regarding the runoff from all the other properties. Like I said, hey, just, I'm not prepared for this tonight.
Understood, yeah. Is that Herring Brook letter, or whatever that came in, is that on the website at this point?
I think it was CC to you. It was CC to the applicant.
Okay.
Rich, I'm not sure if you're the person to ask, but how do you manage keeping a septic system up to snuff, say, pumping it every two or three years, under this shared system?
There, in this instance, there'd be a homeowners association that would handle that type of management, and they would have to have a contract with the company that does it. That's typically how it's done, if the system's shared by 10 houses or two houses. It's, you have, there has to be an association or an agreement between the parties to contribute money towards that, and basically, for any upkeep and maintenance. And that would apply to just a standard system, or a denitrification system. Obviously, on those, the upkeep and maintenance is a lot more.
Thanks for the clarification.
Frank?
Going back to some, one of my concerns from the very first hearing, if you look at Lot 12 and the septic system, it's in the backyard, and it's totally inaccessible. You can't even get in there, it doesn't look like, to me, you can even get in there to pump it if you had to. Why is that not part of a common system, where all the other lots around the cul-de-sac are?
Well, again, it's just a matter of sizing capabilities. We only have room for so much in the, only have room for so much leaching capacity in the center of the cul-de-sac, and in another one that's behind it, and at the entrance to the, entrance leaching system. So, it's all a matter of how big a system we can get in there, and how many bedrooms it can fit. And so, in this instance, based on the size of those, we were able, we wouldn't be able to handle another system, so we had room on that lot to be able to put a septic behind it. And honestly, I, looking at that, there is, seems to me that there is ample ability to get a, an excavator, or mini excavator, back there to repair it if needed. And pumping trucks can also access that from the driveway.
I'd like to speak to that, Frank, please.
Go ahead.
The board. Back in Falmouth Village West, and like many other developments in town that the planning boards approved, there are shared septic systems. And that one I put in there was, I don't know, it was almost 15 years ago. And that one had about 11. In fact, every system on that parcel, except for, one of them's got a shared system. It's done often, and it's, so the paperwork's there that allows for the maintenance, and it's not a problem. And this one doesn't have 11, and that one had 11. In terms of the access back here, there's, I think there's five, there's six systems that have the leaching pit, leaching field in the back, so, several things. Number one, the way those are going to be constructed is with these perforated pipes, and that's common, I did that before. And it's a perforated pipe versus a concrete tank, and therefore, if the system fails, number one, there's another system right beside it. So, this, this is not just one system for that house there, it's two systems. So, if one fails, you get access to the other one. Also, between each house, we made sure there's enough room to get a mini excavator back there. And that's why the engineer, we worked together on this, and we did the perforated pipes versus those tanks, and there's enough room in between those houses to get the mini excavator in there. It's not a lot of work, if it failed, I mean, we got two of them in there. And when I talked to Scott at the Board of Health, he didn't have a problem with it. He said he doesn't address that, so it's not part of Title V. So, you know, we give access to it, ample access, and that's some of the slight changes you may notice on the plan, you may not notice on the plan, but we made some of those slight changes, so that the excavator, it's not 20 feet wide, it's not 10 feet wide, these mini excavators, that for this amount of material, needs, the machine is, it's sized, so the proper machine can get back there in the future, 40, 50 years from now, if it ever happens.
What are the side yard setbacks, in general? Somebody's going to put a fence up someplace, so what are the side yard setbacks?
Oh, I'm going to let Rich address that. They're all, they're all a little bit different, but I can tell you that each and every single one of them accommodates an emergency vehicle getting in the back.
Well, I don't know what that means.
Well, what that means specifically, is that if you got, if a system fails, if the leaching field fails, okay, if the leaching field fails, you've got to go back and deal with it. And you've got to get, you may have to get a machine back there to deal with it.
That's what I'm asking.
And so, to reiterate, what I'm saying is that the size, the size of the machine that needs to get back there, this accommodates, and it's got to be at least, I think the mini excavators go down to probably about six feet, or even less, actually, maybe four feet. I got a plow on the front, and, but we wouldn't be taking the material out of there, because it's contaminated, and we'd have to deal with it right on the site, and that's common. So, this is, a machine can get back there if it's ever needed, but we do have, these systems are built, in the event that one fails, there's another one.
I, I need, I'm sorry, I apologize, but I need to go back, because I don't understand. What is, give me the typical side yard setback. When you're telling me that, and I know all about mini excavators, I know how they work, I know how all of this works. I want to know if it actually can get back there if somebody puts a fence up. I have, I don't have scaled plans here, I have no side yard setback numbers that I can read.
We have no numbers.
There's no numbers?
No.
So, I have no clue what you're talking about.
Just to answer that question, the minimum setbacks is seven feet.
So, the smallest setback is seven feet, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It doesn't say that on here.
It doesn't say that.
Well, on sheet three, there's a table that provides what the minimum setbacks are that we, that are being proposed, in the zoning, zoning table. So, right in here, there's, this part of the table shows what we're providing as minimum setbacks, lot area of coverage, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks.
It's just like, it's just like a note. It's not like shown, but it's a note.
I see it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because these plans are going to be part of, if this is approved, I mean, they're going to become part of that approved. And I think this board needs to make sure it understands that, because I currently do not believe that if someone puts a fence up, you're going to get by those fences. Because excavators, no matter how small they are, they move soil to the side, they're not very heavy, but it's an issue. I'm very concerned about that seven-foot setback as a minimum. I'm very, as Mr. Duffy has pointed out, I'm very concerned about the ability to get to these things, if necessary. I'm also, with Mr. Fenner, I'm very concerned about the future for, we have all kinds of information that says Herring Pond may or may not be in a nitrogen-sensitive area at some point in time. This site may not be, but then again, maybe it will be. And what, just speaking as one, remember, I don't want to see affordable, someone who owns a home, that's an affordable, one of the affordable ones, the five, to have to come up with $25,000, $30,000, if that's the case. Now, I understand there may be some grant you can get from the state on this whole thing, but I don't see any room for an IA system, well, how could I see room for an IA system, if there are no measurements that I can go by? So, my concern is that I don't want to see an affordable homeowner stuck with that cost. That's why they're, that's why you have affordable homes, right? So, they don't have to get involved with that. I want to know that you can put an IA system, room for it, in. That's what Board of Health is doing in many places, and I don't see that. There's no way I can understand this, this plan the way it is.
Yeah, if I can speak to that, because obviously, the Buzzes Bay Coalition...
I'm not even talking about them.
Well, that's who made those comments.
I'm talking about other information that...
Okay.
That our own Board of Health...
So, let me, so, the information that I, regarding the, whether or not Herring Brook is a challenged, is nitrogen-challenged, has already been resolved. It's been resolved and voted on by town meeting, it's been signed off on by everybody in town. And the information that I submitted last week speaks to that. And the gentleman who wrote those letters was Ed Eichner, and he's the one that was, works closely with the town, is involved with this, you do understand that the town is building, has been working on this, and allocated money for the extension of a wastewater treatment plant. And as I said last week, they moved it into this, these beds, into this, into this, in this watershed, because of the, because of its ability, because of the condition, the positive condition of Herring Brook. Now, and so, all I can do is submit that information. So, it comes up every single meeting. The information has been submitted, it's been, it's been, the town has accepted it, the towns moved forward, and I submitted all the information here. So, I'm wondering why it just keeps continuing to come up. Buzzes Bay Coalition, and Mark mentioned them, they've got no standing here. In fact, Buzzes Bay Coalition, the young lady, Corinne Peterson, that submits this stuff, she's not even a scientist.
Sir, sir, we're not going to go here, we're not going here.
Okay, okay.
Not going here.
Okay, if we're not going to go there, if we're not going to go there, then, let me say...
You're asking about the septic.
Well, he was, this came up as well. I just want to, I just want to say that if we want to accept their information...
We're not talking about Buzzes Bay Coalition.
Okay. Well, we were, some, you excuse me, but some folks in the board have brought up their name, it was brought up tonight. So, in order to...
Said he hadn't read the information.
Their submission was late, as yours was.
He said he got it at midnight, we have not read it, I haven't read it.
I don't see where a non-scientist has a, has a, any standing to make comments regarding the things that the town is...
Are you a scientist, sir?
I'm not, and I didn't submit that stuff.
Go ahead, finish up, please.
No, I didn't...
I'm not, I did not bring up Buzzes Bay Coalition. I did not bring that up once, maybe somebody else did. I'm talking about the fact that there, that area down there, Herring Brook, might be, might be declared a nitrogen-sensitive area in the future. We don't know if it will. All I'm talking to you about, or asked, I'm talking, I'm asking you, is, are you going to provide enough room for an IA system? And the answer is no. That's a simple, and don't go back, please, I just want to know.
But you asked me a question, do you want me to answer it or not?
Are you going to provide it or not? It's a simple, simple process.
The nature of your question backs me into a corner that I don't want to be in. So, the answer to the question is, there's, as Rich said, there's 350 square feet additional on each property, where some additional construction can take place. But we do not plan on putting IA systems into a property that doesn't need them, because it's not in a area that's, that requires it, it's not in a watershed that requires it. So, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have another question up here, before we go to the public?
All right.
Mark?
I'd just like to add that the wastewater treatment plant is not allowed to introduce any more into boards, beds 14 and 15. That's why the town is pursuing an outfall pipe. And further, the Herring Brook, since 2012, has been declared nitrogen-sensitive. And again, I'm sorry, I'm going to, my concern is that this project, as dense as it may be, is going to change that into nitrogen-impaired. Then, nobody knows what the DEP is going to be, going to do. The DEP is the one that has declared in 2012, 2014, '18, '20, and '22, that Herring Brook is nitrogen-impaired. The addition of this volume certainly isn't going to decrease that. The only logical thing is that it's going to contribute to it. And again, this just goes forward to my concern, and Mr. Petrucci's concern, is that the affordable, the people that reside in these affordable units are going to get stuck with an expense they can't afford. And it's, on the other side of that coin is, there does not seem to be any allowance in area or depth to provide for the denitrification systems, if they are imposed upon you, or actually imposed upon the homeowners.
Let me ask you this question.
It will be out of your hands by then.
The other applicants that have been up here, have you taken them down this trail as well?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes. Every hearing.
Okay.
Yep.
And my next question is, I just wanted to, did you read the information, the copious information that I submitted at the last hearing?
And I also read...
No, that's a question.
Yes, I did. And I also, and, and the information you provided us stated that, at this point in time, it does not, is not considered a sensitive area. It does not definitively, definitively say that it will not be in the future. You're the one that says that. And I mean, it's just, my concern is for, not for everyone, it's only for the affordable units.
I'm not the one that says that, I'm not, the chairman asked me, I'm not a scientist. I submitted, I submitted information... I submitted, I submitted information that was, that the town is relying upon clearly. And so, I don't understand, I don't understand this line of questioning, to be honest with you. I've submitted the paperwork. I feel as though, I feel as though this development is being treated a little bit differently because we've submitted the paperwork.
Not at all. We go through this with every hearing.
If the town, if the, if the folks that represent the town, that are representing the information about Herringbrook have made the statements that I've read, and it pretty much says, and it talks about Herringbrook extensively, I'm not going to get into the details, it's not my place to do that, but, but the details are there, you know? I spoke into the folks from Amy Lowell up there, and Scott McGann, and so on and so forth. We, so, to speculate that somewhere down the road, something might happen, oh, that's, that's, I think that's, that's, I don't think we should be held to that standard. I think that the comments that come in, you mentioned Buzzes Bay Coalition, if you look closely, they have spurious comments.
No, I mentioned also the DEP.
They're comments are spurious and misleading. You did.
For the last 12 years, the DEP has graded Herringbrook as impaired.
That's wrong. They've listed it that way, let me, let me just, and then I'm going to say, oh, because I, we can take this up the next time with some...
Well, they wield the big hammer.
But I can say this to you, that if you look deeper into how those, how those assessments were done, that very assessment in 2012 was done by the Buzzes Bay Coalition, as far as I can see, and I got the information, and I've read that. But also, also, any individual can submit information to the DEP.
All right, I'm shutting it down. I'm shutting this Buzzes Bay Coalition talk now. He did not bring them up. Frank, do you have any other questions?
Yes. Going to page six of your plans, which is the road profile. You have a 10% grade, and it looks, it looks to me, and I want you to correct me, Rich, if I'm wrong, but it's got, the roadway starts out at 45 feet above sea level, rises to a height of 80 feet above sea level, so that's a 35-foot increase over the, over the length of the road.
Yes.
So, that, to me, means that every house built along that road is going to be a few feet higher than the one next to it. How are you going to terrace this property so that every house is level? Are you going to have to put retaining walls on every property line? How are you going to get, get this on such a slope?
Sure. On sheet four is the grading plan, and we've not only shown preliminary grading for the roadway, but we've shown some preliminary grading for each of the lots. And, and you are correct, for the lots such as 5, 6, 7, 8, on this side of the road, 16, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, those are where the road is steeper. We do show that we'll need some retaining wall to be able to...
Now, those dark lines grading, retaining walls?
Yes, yeah, those are what we anticipate being required because of, basically, the, what you've noticed, that the roads deep, those lots are going to have to be terraced, and that's...
And how high are these retaining walls going to be?
I mean, they're, they vary. I'm just looking at the contour lines, probably four feet, those are one, but maybe, those are one-foot contours, so, two, three, four.
Some of these, some of these lots have a retaining wall on both sides.
Yep. 18. Oh, yes, yeah.
That all needs to be shown on the plan.
Well, it is, now that he's explained it.
Like the heights.
But...
It is.
That's, okay. I've been distressed from the very beginning about the slope of this road and the elevation. But anyways, I continue to be.
That's also going to affect the mini, the mini excavator, you know, going to go in like this. Any other questions up here before we go to the public?
I'm not, I'm, sorry, Madam Chairman, I'm not trying to go back to comments. What the board has heard regarding the request is to put in a standard Title V septic. We've had testimony from our Board of Health regarding that the best practice that they're going to be asking going forward, and I don't think it's unreasonable, is to ensure, if you're putting in a standard Title V septic, to make sure there's going to be a reserved space. I would like to see on your revised plans coming back where the reserved space would be, and if you can't because of the dimensions, just indicate there is no reserved space. I don't want to get back into the whole issue of, but that is the best practice going forward. We don't know what we don't know in terms of the maps and what could change. But you've heard the concern from the board that an affordable owner could someday get saddled with a very costly improvement. What would be worse is if they were required to do that, and they wouldn't have the space to put it in, essentially having a caking of the home. So, I would like to see that on the revised plans. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I have one other thing, too. We need an environmental and an economic impact statement that was set forth by the peer review.
Yes, we were...
Staring?
Based on all the discussions on those type of issues at these hearings, again, that was something that's submitted with a definitive subdivision plan, not a preliminary plan. But we, frankly, we added that as a request in our waiver request letter, that since we seem to be discussing and addressing a lot of the environmental concerns during these hearings, why would we need to submit another impact statement at the definitive plan stage? So, we just requested a way, added that to the waiver request letter.
To waive it completely?
Yes. Because again, we're discussing those type of issues here at these hearings.
Madam Chair. So, we haven't waived anything yet. I mean, we haven't waived anything. We're asking for information on a subject that we haven't waived, and maybe we won't waive it.
And then, at that point, we, when we submit the definitive plan, we would have to provide that.
And definitive plan, defi, tell me, please, I appreciate, if you would just tell me. Who is the definitive plan going to?
It has, it goes to you.
It comes here?
Mm-hmm.
And...
Normal subdivisions that are in, that aren't comprehensive permits, all that work goes to the planning board. But with a comprehensive permit, the zoning board is the approval agency, so, we would have to, after the comprehensive permits issued, we'd be doing detailed engineering and more detailed calculations and designs. We'd have a Mylar prepared that has all the bearings and distances and certifications on the plan, and that would come back to you for endorsement.
My, my, just follow-up question to that is, how long would it take you to do the environmental impact?
I don't know.
Have you even attempted to do it?
Uh, no. Again, it's, it's not a requirement for this...
I just want this, I want this on the record.
Yeah, it's not a requirement for the preliminary plan, it's a requirement for the definitive plan.
But you do understand the board's concern?
Mm-hmm.
And how long would it take you to prepare it?
I would have to look at the requirements.
Yes.
Couple of weeks? I don't know, just guessing.
Maybe you need to work on it, I don't know. I'm just suggesting. Thank, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else up here? Let's go to the public. I'm going to read Mrs. Litterford's letter into the record, if I may, "To the board to whom it may concern, as the existing home and garage are slated to be demolished, I would like to know why can't the road be straight instead of curving to the left?" These are questions that will need to be answered. "I am still requesting that the road be moved 10 to 30 feet to the north, thereby allowing the developer to use his own property for the entrance." Paragraph two, "I am still challenging the survey of this property. All of my, all of my legal surveys and bondstables stated to, stated to the developer. Also, I want to know if the developer used the previous map from the previous owner, Johanna Cardoza. Survey has not been, has not been done by a certified professional land surveyor and documented. My home, 15 North Falmouth Highway, is historical. It is in a historical district and holds historical significance in the Boston Historical Society Record. I want this information to be corrected for the record. Pictures of North Falmouth Highway at, at Subdivision Road viewed to the north is questionable and does not appear correct. Regarding Section 30524B8, street layout revised May 3, 24, page 3, width of 60 feet when abutting property not owned by subdivider, an exclamation and further clarification is needed. April 26, 24, a document, parking and access typically require roadway radius terminate in front of the property so as not to encroach on any abutting, on any abutting property use. As noted, quotations potentially limits use of 15 North Falmouth Highway, unquote. She has also stated that all junk left from the previous owner to be removed before any construction to begin, and none of it to be buried and placed on her property." And that's from Mrs. Litterford. And do you have anything else tonight, Mrs. Litterford? You go, girl.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Phyllis Manese Littiford. I have an item that I would like clarification. As I said, one of the pictures...
Can you pull that microphone down so the people can hear you at home? Bend the microphone down towards your...
Perfect.
Perfect.
The picture that's in the board, not the board, but the Beal and Thomas...
Beal and Thomas, yep. Peer review, that's called.
The view to the north does not seem correct. This is on page four. North Falmouth Highway at Subdivision Road viewed to the north.
What seems off to you?
Well, that roadway already exists. That's not to the north. That is to the north, North Falmouth. That roadway is already there.
You mean where that barrel is?
Yes.
Okay.
Then they have another view to the south. However, I'm questioning the stake that's on the property near my property line, which has an orange flag on it. It was my understanding that that's where he wants to put a, a roadway there to encroach upon my property.
We can ask the engineer that question?
I don't know what that stake is, or if it's ours, or, I don't know. It could be a random location of a sort of a traverse point.
Speak from the microphone, please.
Right where the house is.
Right in front of the applicant's house?
Pardon?
In front of the applicant's house?
To, if you're facing the house, it's on the right side. It's on the line where my property, it butts his property. That's, to me, what indicates that curve that's on the map, April 26, 24, which states, parking and access, item 6C. Note that the, that for the town street opening permits, we typically require the road radius terminate in front of the property so as not to encroach on the abutting property use. And on the little yellow thing that says potentially limits use of 15 North Falmouth Highway. Part of that is my property.
It is.
So, I don't know.
We can have that addressed for the next hearing. You'll take that up?
That already has been revised and addressed on the last set of plans.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Which, which, where...
Hold on, Mrs., let him come up and address it, please. Thank you.
There have been too many revisions and what have you, and the people that abut the property don't have this information.
Just to address that one comment, that was addressed in the, in the July submittal, re-submittal. So, that, that no longer encroaches on past your property line.
So, my property line is straight. It will not. I'd like to see a copy of it.
Peer review mentions it, that's what she's getting at.
Yeah, that was mentioned in the DPW, your engineering, engineer in your DPW division mentioned that, and we addressed that the last time.
And what was the account outcome of the statement?
It doesn't encroach past your property line.
So, you will not need that curve to en, to enter that property?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that's what he's saying on the record.
Yeah, the plan here shows that it doesn't go past your property line. That's on sheet three.
Well, I don't have sheet three.
It's okay.
I must say, well, it's still on here. The curve is still there.
Yes, but it does not encroach past your property line.
So, how is the, how is the car going to enter the road? How is people going to enter into that property?
As they would in any subdivision road.
So, they'll come down the street and turn on their own, not touching my property at all.
Yes.
I would like to see a copy of that, also.
Go around to the mic, Mrs. Litterford, please.
All right.
Do you want to look at mine while you ask questions? I just need you to have the mic. That's all.
You can turn it around, and it'll just grab onto it and pull it right there. There you go. Perfect.
Okay.
We have a video of the audience at home hanging on your every word.
The, I, I'm not sure what these little wiggly lines are, if they're supposed to be a fence.
Sounds like you need one.
Huh?
They're actually different to the property.
A fence. Well, I don't know.
It's like it might be a stone wall, though.
There, there's, there was...
Stone wall.
Yeah, it could be a stone wall. It could be a stone wall, it's changed.
I don't have a stone wall.
It's a fence.
You know, there's, you know what? All I can say is, this has not been a well-researched project.
No.
It seems like things are added, and when a person gets here to rebut whatever's done, something has been submitted. And, and I'm looking at something cold that I don't know about, because one of these projects has end of rail down at the bottom, and there's a proposed fence. It's too close to my property line, fences. If you, if you install a fence, how many feet onto your own property will that fence be placed? To the engineer?
Yes. He has to come up and answer. Is that what is proposed at the bottom of that, a fence? Where she says the, there are squiggly lines, as she said.
End of proposed three-rail fence, four feet high.
Mm-hmm. That's the landscape plan, there would be a landscape fence, yeah.
Where? What have these dotted line, what is that? What is that?
That's the fence.
That's the fence there?
Yep.
And it ends right here?
Mm-hmm. Base on there.
On the property, almost on my property line.
Yes, but it does not, again, doesn't encroach on...
How many feet?
Typically, they, I'm sure they would put them at least a foot off to be able to build the posts for the...
Three feet. I checked, it's three feet into the owner's property when you put up a fence. Don't come anywhere near mine. You know, I'm so sick of this project, I really am. To have 4.27 acres of land to put 24, then 20, it tells me that things are changing as you go along. I don't want any shrub on my property line. I have enough problem trying to cut down some trees that need to be cut down. I have enough problem trying to cut down some trees that need to be cut down. There was something else. Oh. Not only, I'm going back to that curb which was on that April twenty-six, twenty-four letter. There's also a telephone pole there. What are you going to do with that? Knock it down?
Is there a telephone pole? Is there a telephone pole?
Did you take into account that telephone pole? Engineer?
Am I supposed to respond, or-
Somebody answered.
We can do it at the end. So remember that one.
Because that's where the curb was, or is, and I'd like to have a copy of some of these changes that have been made from week to week and time to time.
We just got ours tonight, too.
This is very time-consuming.
Uh-huh.
This is taking up my time. I'm not enjoying my vacation here. The street layout of sixty feet when abutting a property not owned by the subdivider, has that been addressed?
I think that's going to be in the waiver list, if I'm correct.
Yes, it is.
Because I asked that the last two times we had the hearing, and I thought that the Beales and Thomas peer group was going to be here today. Isn't that-
No, because they had no response from the applicant. They had no plan back. They had nothing. Nobody's had anything till tonight at dinnertime.
This letter from them is dated September twenty-four.
Certainly was. They had plenty of time, and they, we didn't get anything till dinnertime tonight.
Oh, my God. This is not any way to conduct business. You're trying to develop something. Like I said, this not have, has not been well researched, well thought about before jumping into a 4.2 acres of land. And I want to be sure that no shrub, tree, or fence is near my property line. Please find out how many feet back you have to go. And I think that is it.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public want to come up? It's a hard act to follow.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
All these changes that have been made by the owner of the property or engineers that I don't have in front of me, I would like to get a copy.
I'm sure-
If possible, as far as my being in the butter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody else is all set in the public? Anybody else have any follow-up questions? Did we already vote on December fifth? I'll take a motion to continue till December fifth, since I can't remember if we already did it. And a second?
Second.
All right, we're continuing to December fifth?
Do you have anything specific that you want the applicant to do for that date?
Work diligently with the peer reviewer.
Yes, definitely work with the peer reviewer. It claims he has been, but-
Clarifications on reserve area for a normal Title V and the height of the retaining walls.
Height on the retaining walls, the, we'd like to know more about the fence and the telephone pole. I'd like to know where open space is going to be for the kids in the neighborhood. I would also like us to contact Historic, please. Do we have anything from them?
Any questions?
Sure. Wait, we already voted.
Yeah.
We didn't close. We continued. Yes, you can, I have to think if you can ask-
It's just a clarification. So when Phyllis asked for, to see everything, I just went on to the website, and I've looked a couple of times. I can't find any changes either or any of this.
Just came in.
Right, I realize that. So when does that get up, so we can all look at it?
It'll be up tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Perfect. Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything from Historical?
I would have to check the referrals, but essentially-
I can't remember either if it's in there.
You do.
We do have something, okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember. Okay. I don't know if I have anything. Anybody else have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. I would like the ADA to be shown on the plan, too, the sidewalks, and how you're going to deal with, with all that in between each dwelling, if we could.
Well, I know you haven't had a chance to look at the plans, but we do have details on those sheets, yeah.
It is on there, okay. I just haven't had time. I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, anybody else have anything else for Noreen? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Keep your vote in.
Oh, all those wanting to continue to December five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? I thought you did. Thank you. Oh, Lord, Lord, Lord. All right, moving on. Mrs. Litterford, I don't even know what that is. The agenda's gone. I'll use yours again. Now we have-
Yes.
A new hearing, 419 Wacoit Highway. I need my speech.
Should I start with the reading, the hearing?
Yes, you're going to open it. Yep.
Here's my agenda for the job. Way too much to get.
Our next matter is 09724 Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc., 419 Wacoit Highway in East Falmouth. They're requesting a comprehensive permit to demolish the existing dwelling and replace it with five single-family dwellings, all units to be affordable. We have several referrals from town departments on file. The Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department has noted that the hydrants they've shown on the plan are acceptable, and there's sufficient space in the travel lanes for fire apparatus. Otherwise, they have no other comments. The Board of Health has made, given us a note that the property is in a nitrogen-sensitive area. It's the Wacoit Bay Coastal Pond overlay district. The applicant proposes denitrification systems. They call to our attention Section 15.13 of the Falmouth Local Regulations, that if a denite system is voluntary, individual septic systems are acceptable. If mandatory, then a shared septic system is required unless waived by the Board of Health, but I think it's waived by us as under the comprehensive rules.
Oh, no worries.
The Water Department notes that Lot Five needs a service line of two inches, which differs from what's shown on the plan. There's a necessity for an easement to the Water Department to access and flush the hydrant, as shown on the plan, and as-built plans must be prepared and submitted to the Water Department when the project is completed. We have a lengthy, and I mean lengthy like sixteen-page, letter from the Engineering Department, and I'm not going to read it, but I will just suggest that it's online, and it does raise a lot of issues, but these issues are technical issues mostly relating to the subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth, and these issues will have to be addressed by the applicant in the subsequent presentation. The Housing Coordinator has noted that this project advances the housing production plan of the town, and there is requests for additional information on barrier-free and handicap units.
So, Madam Chairman, as a preliminary motion, I'd like to make a motion that the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals has the grounds to declare that a denial or approval with conditions of this application is consistent with local needs as defined in general Act Chapter Forty-B, Sections Twenty to Twenty-three, and 760 CMR 56.031A and 3A, because the town's subsidized housing inventory exceeds 10% and further under 760 CMR 56.031B and Four for municipal compliance with its approved housing production plan, and to provide the requisite 15-day notice following tonight's hearing to the applicant and to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Conditions. Community members, excuse me.
We need a second on that?
I'll second it.
And now I offer the applicant the opportunity-
We've got to vote.
No, we have to vote first. On, all those in favor?
Do you want any discussion?
Any discussion first. Good point. Discussion first, anybody?
No. Just providing the requisite notice.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? And then we offer the applicant the opportunity to proceed.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan. I'm the Executive Director and In-House Counsel for the Falmouth Housing Trust. With me tonight is Joanna Sullivan, who is also a Falmouth attorney and the Vice President for the trust. Normally, we'd have more people here tonight, but we're a little thinned out. We have a first-time homebuyer class going on at the library, so we have a couple of directors there, and we have people over on Martha's Vineyard working with a donation. So you have us. Just for the record, I did file a letter in the file. I do acknowledge receipt of your notice on the SHI. You may or may not have seen my letter, but we have maintained that there are errors on that SHI as to units that are included that shouldn't be included. You know, this project is 100% affordable, and hopefully that's not going to become an issue. But just for the record, I wanted to make you aware that my letter reserving all rights to the applicant pursuant to the SHI 10% is in your file. So, this is 419 Wacoit Highway. This property is in the Village of Wacoit. Some of these maps, as we go through this, you'll see have the locus as this larger parcel. That's because that's the way it's set out on the GIS maps and the assessor's records. It has since been divided. So the property that we're dealing with is, runs pretty much a line there at the southerly boundary, and this is our locus here, closest to Wacoit Highway. It is part of a former 3.8 acre parcel of land. And so the history of this parcel was that it was acquired by the 300 Committee this year for open space and affordable housing. It is known as the service property, and this is the overview map showing generally the location of the property in relation to other properties and dwellings. It was divided, as I said. 1.1 acres was set aside for housing, 2.7 acres for open space, and the Division of Conservation Services Commonwealth of Massachusetts now owns the 2.7 acres closest to the pond, and that is public open space, and it's managed by Webner. And DCR Webner do plan, my understanding is to connect an existing trail system that exists around the pond to, to connect this parcel in the future. So this is, I think, fair to say, a model project for private and public partnership to provide open space and housing. This map here shows the locus with the existing home on it, and again, I've just hand-drawn the line in approximately where our boundary is. You can see the proximity of the abutting properties. This is the vet clinic here, and these are the residential abutters in this location here, and obviously here's the pond. So the Housing Trust acquired the 1.1 acre parcel with funds from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and the remaining funds for the purchase of this piece were given by the Commonwealth, or paid by the Commonwealth and through private donations to the 300 Committee. So the existing conditions, again, located in Wacoit Village, zoned residential A. You'll see from the zoning map that it is adjacent to business-owned property. There's also general residence property in the vicinity. It is a mixed-use commercial and residential neighborhood. Those of you familiar with Wacoit Village know that across the street in this area, you have various services, the Moonicus Cafe, you have a gas station, the Wacoit Feed and Grain Store. So you have the Village of Wacoit essentially in the, in the commercial area anyway, within this business district. And we also have multifamily dwellings in that area and other areas. So the project description is to demolish the existing single-family home. This picture is actually one of our homes on Sam Turner Road that was completed last year, and that's the three-bedroom model that we would be using for the Wacoit property as well. We would be looking to construct five homes and five individual lots. 100% of the units would be deed restricted as affordable and attainable housing. The existing curb cut off of Wacoit Highway would be modified. That does require mass DOT approval. It is within their jurisdiction to approve that curb cut modification. We'd be constructing two three-bedroom homes with two baths and three two-bedroom homes with one and a half baths. And this is a colored plan that's in your file, showing the location of the homes and the road, the subdivision way. In the design of the housing, we have looked to try and complement the village setting by, again, here is the business district, bringing the homes across Wacoit Highway, west, east to west, essentially. We have set back the homes 35 feet from the street, which is the required setback, and we have looked at creating a pedestrian area or network, so to speak, in the front of the homes, and having the parking at the back of the homes, and then a fifth home here in this location. So we've tried to maintain the green space on the front of the property and bring the vehicle use essentially around the back of the property while still trying to give the homeowners some backyard space. The architecture is traditional New England architecture. The dwelling construction features that are that they would be solar and EV-ready. We have added visitability features on the first floor of the, of the homes by widening the entry door and the first-floor bathroom access. And those visitability features were recommended by the Select Board as part of the funding process, so we did make those changes to the, to the floor plans. The zoning requirements will be met-
Excuse me, Laura?
Jim has a quick question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Attorney Moynihan, would you mind just going back to this, like?
Yes.
Could I just inquire, where would the trail access to the open and conservation land be relative to the buildings it's right now?
Well, that would not be off of our property. This portion of land here that you see, this long-necked portion, that's the beginning of the state property. I do not know, and I don't know if the plans have really been finalized yet for the access or how that's going to work. I believe that Webner is, will be working on that, but as of now, I don't have any detailed information on that. I do know that there are existing trails around the pond, and there are also existing properties that are, in the green, are now open space properties that are, are under control of Webner or the Commonwealth. So my understanding is that there is a trail system in these properties, and that they're working on those types of connections.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
I have another quick question.
Yes.
Was the orange, is that buffer?
No, that is wood chips or mulching areas on the property.
There's no buffer at all?
Well, you have these gray, this is vegetated buffer here.
Okay.
These gray areas, vegetated buffer, vegetated buffer here.
Okay.
And this is the business district here. So-
Sorry, I just didn't know what the-
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yes, zoning requirements are met for frontside and rear setbacks, building height, number of stories, parking lot coverage by structures, lot coverage overall. This is the proposed two-bedroom dwelling, which you have in your plans. Septic systems, we're proposing DEP-approved individual advanced treatment systems for nitrogen removal. This is, this is voluntary. There is no regulatory requirement for the advanced treatment septic systems in this location. It is an important issue. It's important in this watershed in particular that the advanced treatment be utilized. The Housing Trust felt very strongly that it was what should be done here. We also did receive information from the Health Department, which sort of was discussed in your last hearing, that it is highly likely, within three to five years, that the homeowners will be receiving letters to upgrade to advanced treatment. And we did not want that to be placed on the back of the affordable homeowners, so we've incorporated it into the project. This is within the jurisdiction of the Health Department, because it is a state permit for the issuance of the wastewater permit, so the IA systems will have to be approved by the Health Department. Our plan is to do that concurrently with this process and have, and get through that process this fall to have the proposed IA systems approved. We're also proposing that we will have to set aside an escrow fund for the homeowners for the O and M, the inspections and maintenance. That's likely going to be something around $15,000 for five systems, but again, if you're putting in the advanced treatment, they have to pay for that O and M each year. So that's being factored into the cost of the advanced treatment systems is that escrow fund, which the Housing Trust would maintain, pay for those inspections until such time as we can assist the homeowners in having the Board of Health reduce that requirement to once yearly only, which is a more manageable cost, $300 to $400, yes.
Haven't settled on a system yet?
The plans that you have are showing the Advantech system. We're still looking at that, at potentially other options, but that's what we have right now. Over the next couple of weeks, that may change, but for now, we're proposing the Advantech system, which treats at about 19 milligrams per liter. There are two systems, the DEP best available technology right now for approved systems is the Advantech system and the Nitro system. There are other types of treatment techniques that have not received approval from the DEP, urine diversion, sort of something like that. We can't use technologies that aren't approved by the DEP. We have to be able to use technologies that we can get a building permit with. So we're looking at the individual IA systems, but probably said more than you want to hear on the IA systems, but it's an important issue.
That's all good news.
It is good news.
Protecting a lot of boxes off.
I know, I know, and it's, you know, this really is a model project for public and private, and, you know, people coming forward and doing, you know, protecting open space, creating housing, protecting the watershed, so it's all important information. These are the median income limits for 2024, 122,700 is the county median income limit. So I just put this information in here, and this is always changing, but I think it's important for the public especially to understand that when you're looking at the homeowners and their income levels for these particular homes, we'd be looking at two 80% homes, two 120% homes and 100% homes. So these are the maximum income limits for those categories. And you can see that for even 100% income limit for, you know, one of our two-bedroom homes, which could be a three-person household, that would be up to 110,063. So this is really workforce housing. This is for our workforce. It's interesting that the Housing Assistance Corporation, that does a lot of the local lotteries, is telling us that the majority of the applicants they're receiving for sales are households that are earning about $100,000. And those are typically two-wage-earning households, so a couple each earning 50,000 to 60,000. That seems to be the trend. We're also seeing smaller households applying, less children, so that is one of the major reasons why we've looked to do three two-bedrooms here, because there is an increased need for that smaller household. There's tiered affordability for the project, so as I said, we'd be doing two 80% AMI homes, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. We would be doing 100% AMI, one of the two bedrooms, and we'd be doing two 120% AMI homes, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. And these would be the sale prices for the homes as proposed, and I've just shown you pictures here as well. These are some of the interiors of the Sam Turner homes. The construction would be very similar, and Clancy Construction does the work, and they do a beautiful job. And here's the sample of the kitchen. So these are the sale prices that we would be proposing. And again, you know, some people at 120% AMI, they might say, well, 340,000 and 390,000. That's what we call attainable housing. You know, that's, that is attainable for households that are earning 150,000, 160,000 a year that have a couple of children or three children. So they have to be able to qualify for the mortgage, they have to have good credit to qualify, but these prices are attainable, and this is the gap that we're really seeing is this 120% AMI income providing these new homes. So in terms of the development standards, under the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund priorities, we are creating affordable and attainable housing with increased density compatible with the mixed-use neighborhood, meeting the criteria of the target population, providing workforce housing at 80 to 120% AMI, and we're creating more deed-restricted units than required by 40B. Under the local and regional housing goals, supporting the implementation of those plans, we're meeting the goals of the Cape Cod Commission and the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, minimizing greenfield development and targeting residential development and redevelopment where it already exists, and addressing the local comprehensive plan policies as well for infill development, multiple housing opportunities, and accepting responsibility for providing housing for people of all stages of life and income. And under the Affordable Housing Production Plan, it does recommend creation of 400 housing units by 2029. That is the recommendation, even if the town reaches 10% of the, on the SHI. The Housing Production Plan does recommend that we keep going. We submit that the SHI is not determinative of the current need. Not all those units are restricted. Our calculations show it's only about 6.7% of the SHI units are actually deed-restricted units, the rest are market rental units, and we still have a significant shortage of workforce housing and affordable and attainable deed-restricted units. Here is the data on our housing costs currently. The current median sale price for a home in our county is $775,000. That's the average price of a home, and you can see from the graph how that has gone up and is at almost $800,000 to buy a home. And that requires an income of about $210,000 to purchase a home with a mortgage at those prices. We have seen reports and dat, oops, sorry, reports and data showing that about 50% of the Cape Cod workers are living off Cape and commuting because of the housing crisis, and that we're losing about 800 families per year with income at 100,000 or less. And we have a 35% decline in the Falmouth Public Schools in the past 20 years. We have had the support through funding of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. $750,000 have been awarded for the project, 100,000 of that is for, was for acquisition, and the other 650,000 will go to construction if approved by this board. We received our site approval through Mass Housing, and we have received the support of the Affordable Housing Committee. And that is our presentation. Just like to say that we appreciate the detailed work that the Engineering Department has done. We are working on addressing the points that have been made. None of it really seems insurmountable, it's just technical changes. We also appreciate the fact that they are not recommending peer review, which is very beneficial to this project, to save us about $10,000. And so over the next probably week or two, we will be filing a response and most likely some plan changes to address those comments, as well as the Water Department. So that's my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great, Mark, you want to start off?
No, I don't have any.
Look at that, Laura. That's bait. Scott?
Let I follow up with Mark. I think, great project, hats off to everything you've done. I loved the whole portion of the septic. I was looking at the lines of site, of which I was kind of surprised, looking east and west, where it's over 330 feet and 350 feet. I thought it was a little bit difficult, quite honestly, getting in and out, but it looks as though, at least from the math here, it looks achievable, but hopefully, do you know what the speed limit is on the highway right there? I know that talks about 40 miles an hour here, but is that what the speed limit is there?
Well, the, there is, there is a site distance plan that's in your file that shows that there would be clearing in the state highway. So yes, going in and out now, you have especially the curve to the, I guess it would be to the west, so that site distance will have to be opened up along the frontage of the property line to meet the standards that are implied. Our understanding is that it's, it's hard to believe that it's 40 miles an hour in the village, but I have to confirm that with Mass DOT, because the closest sign is actually down by the church, and so it's really hard to pin that down. We have to do that.
Okay. And it looks, as to Frank's earlier points and comments, it looks like the fire trucks can kind of get in and get turned around on your T. It's a good project, you've done a great job on a dilapidated site, and again, just kind of beat through all of those engineering comments that we could-
Yes.
-you know, get through the next meeting on, that would be great.
We will definitely attend to that. We actually already are, we just didn't have time to get it done for tonight.
Good job.
Thank you.
Frank, you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
I just have a nitpicky one. Why are the driveways not close to the house?
They can have a backyard.
Well, we tried to set it up so that there would be, you mean the parking areas? Yes. We tried to set it up that way so that the homeowners could have backyard space without infringing on their backyards, you know, given where the housing is located. So if you move the parking closer to the homes, then you're going to have to have a driveway going in, and then you're going to be taking up your backyard space.
I was just thinking about elderly people carrying their groceries, and that's all I was just thinking about that. And this is not a historical district here?
It is not.
Okay. That's all I have. Jim?
No, I mean, I, it's the sort of friendly 40B that I enjoy reviewing.
Yeah.
So I did read the Safe Harbor motion, but this is, I think, is an excellent project. I'll share the comments of the board. I think as long as we can get through some of the engineering issues raised, which, as you say, are not insurmountable, I think this is, should hopefully be wrapped up rather quickly, and look forward to continuing to work on it.
Thank you.
I mean, congratulations, it's such a well-thought-out plan and all the consideration that you've given to this site and to the affordable homeowners with regard to the fund you discussed earlier for operation and maintenance of that thing, that is just, to me, that's outstanding when I hear that. I do have a quick question, and I agree with everybody else's comments too, but this is a little nitpicky and maybe much too early to ask. So you're volunteering the IA system, and if it's volunteered, I got the wrong glasses on, if it's volunteered, then it can be individual systems. If it's required by the ZBA, then it has to be, what does it say? I'm not sure I understand this. The question is whether de-oxidification is voluntary or being required by the ZBA. If voluntary, the individual systems are suitable. If required by the ZBA, the applicant can either show a shared system or ask the Board of Health. So in the end, if this became, your voluntary part of this became part of the ZBA conditions or decision, does that mean you would have to go to a shared system? I mean, where does this, where does all of this go?
Well, Scott McGann actually updated that referral, because when he issued it, I called him and asked him to consider that that was a little bit confusing and that, that board members may have that exact question. So the gist of it is, there is another referral in the file where he's essentially saying that the IA systems as individual systems require Board of Health approval. There is no requirement in the town for a shared system for this property, so there is no board or committee that would, under any regulatory authority, impose the requirement for a shared system. So the issue is for the zoning board, I suppose, under some discretionary 40B authority might say, we're imposing a requirement for a shared system, but they wouldn't be doing it under any regulatory authority. So that's why I asked him to clarify that, that there is no requirement for a shared system here, because we're, because we're five lots or under-
I'm just so impressed that you've already included IA, I don't want to-
Yeah.
I want to make sure we don't do something to create an issue. That's why I'm asking the question.
No, in my opinion, I don't think that there's a discretionary ability to say, you must do this kind of system. I think that the board has to be guided by what the regulations are in terms of what's required in the district, or the applicant has to volunteer something. And so that's why I went back to Scott and asked him to clarify that. So here we are volunteering the individual systems, because we feel it's the right thing to do. You know, a shared system for a property this small is difficult, and you've got ongoing O and M that has to be, you know, under the control of a homeowners association. When you, and when you only have five homes, that's tough to have that oversight, you know, within that kind of association. So we feel that the individual systems are the better way to go and have each homeowner responsible for their own system. Plus with the shared system, you, if you have trouble with one homeowner, they're all in trouble, right? So that's why we looked at that issue pretty carefully and went back and forth and decided that the individual systems were the better way to go. So does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
I knew that that was going to be confusing, and that's why I called Scott and said, can you clarify that, please, because it's, I'm not, I think at the time he wrote that, he was thinking that there was some requirement for the shared system, and there isn't, so.
No, there wouldn't have been a savings with a shared system?
No. No. So there would have been a savings for the O and M, so, because you only have one system that you have to inspect quarterly, and we did, we did look at that and we weighed that in terms of, you know, it was not a lot more money to just put aside the O and M escrow fees for five systems versus the shared system. Because the shared system, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'm very confident to say that, no, there wouldn't have been a cost savings.
Okay, I don't know enough about them, but I know that there can be a problem with them when you, what you add to it drops off, and then it takes the system a while to catch up. Just in my mind, it would be, a shared system would probably lessen that, but like I said, I don't know enough about them to-
Okay.
...really comment.
Any, Nick, do you have any questions? Nick, do you have any questions?
No. Seems like a very genuine project.
I wish it was scheduled before the last hearing.
Yeah.
But I was thinking...
Now, this is the same design you've used before?
For the homes?
Yeah.
Yes, for the three-bedroom, with the exception of the change that was made for the visitability. So on the three-bedroom, the kitchen layout that you see in this picture, the U shape, because of the visitability change, the bathroom opening had to be greater. And that had to come from the kitchen. And so, we felt that this design was kind of small, tight enough with the U. So you'll see on the floor plans that this kitchen design has actually been revised and that there will be essentially an open kitchen. So the wall, the sink wall will be there. And then you'll have the stove wall. And then you'll have an open island. So that... This wall where the fridge is shown here will not be there. It'll be an open concept with an island. So, you know, the change to the bathroom requires the kitchen change. But it will open it all up on the first floor. On the two-story or the two-bedroom home, I don't think... We don't have an interior one of those because we haven't built one of those yet. But this is the outside. There's... The bathroom is on the first floor and the bedrooms are both upstairs. So all that required to accomplish the visitability was to open up the bathroom. And it will take about a foot from the living room area.
Thanks.
Do you have any... Oh, sorry. Do you have any proposed guest parking?
We do not.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just meeting the bylaw standard of two per house.
Because I'm thinking, you know, if there's a holiday or something. I don't know. It's not necessarily like somebody could park and walk there either?
Yeah, I mean...
Pull up on the backyard.
Park at the feed store.
Nope, they pull up in the backyard.
You have a 40-foot wide road layout, too. Don't forget it. This isn't a driveway. It's a subdivision road layout. So you're going to have space on either side. That's part of the road layout that won't be built. So... But no, we just went with the bylaw requirement.
Okay. And then was there any thought given to potential fencing for, you know, if people had young kids or pets?
Well, we did think about this. And I think you have to... There's a plan in your file that shows the proposed shed locations in dash lines. So if you haven't seen that, you... I should have put it up on here, but I didn't think about it. So we're not proposing to build sheds, but we did lay them out on the plan so that if the homeowners do want to do that. So as far as fencing goes, our thought on the fencing was that we would landscape in between the house lots, particularly the three-two bedrooms, in places for privacy. And we would, in our covenants for the homes, we would prohibit fencing. Because we're trying to create more of an open area and not have narrow lots with fencing that runs all the way along. So in the landscape plan, you know, the evergreen trees are proposed with the pink dots or orange dots there to accomplish that privacy for the backyard deck area and then maybe leaving the green space open. So I think we would want to prohibit fencing, unless the board felt it was necessary.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking little kids and the proximity to a very busy road. Because, you know, you turn away for five minutes and depending on the age of the child.
Yeah, well, they're set back 35 feet. I mean, I'm not sure we would really want to fence off Wacoit Highway.
No, I wasn't thinking, but I was just trying to figure out how you could potentially protect for that.
Corraling the kids. Where is mail and packaging?
Well, the mail... We tried to design it coming off of Wacoit Highway so that there could be, you know, an area for mail to come in, for the post person.
Amazon and all, yeah.
Yeah, to come in off the front, right into the front of the dwelling. So that'd be, you know...
Pullover spot or...?
Well, I guess it would be if there was a delivery truck coming in, that they would be pulling off... You know, for these homes, they'd be pulling off in this location, off the road layout and/or in here. Or even up here on the curb and then coming in and delivering to the front. And then this one, they'd come right into the driveway. Or they could come all the way around and pull into the driveway or pull into the turnout.
And snow removal, I'm taking, will be on the wood chips? Maybe that on the right?
Well, the proposal is to have the town accept this as a public way.
Oh, okay.
For trash and snow removal.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That's our plan, is to have it taken as a public way because it would meet the subdivision with standard.
Perfect.
Go ahead. Since I've been on this board and had the opportunity to look at many past 40Bs in this community, none of yours, I find it very distressing to see that some of them are built in a way that is no pride of place for people to come home to. And folks who need this should have quality homes to come to. So one of the ways of that happening, and I think this is what you're doing, is it's just the way the architecture is, and I think that's there. It's how the columns are encased in whatever you're going to use, PVC. But it's also the siding. And I think your two-bedrooms are showing shingle and I think your three-bedroom are clavate. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
No, I just think that the folks that buy these things deserve, you know, something that's pretty nice to come home to.
They are very nice homes. And this one here is one on Sam Turner. And as I said, you know, Greg Clancy and his crew, they do a really good job. So yes, we try to do that. And everything is, you know, it can't be top of the line, obviously, but it's not bottom of the line, you know, in terms of features and fixtures. And it is important.
I bring it up because I bring it up with all of them. And I can see, as long as... I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, well, thank you. There is, in the application, the specs are there if you're interested in looking at the fixtures and features. But they're in the file.
Any other questions up here before we go to the public? Marie, you good? You good? Anybody from the public want to comment on this or ask questions? Come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Matt Patrick. I live at 24 Collins Road, which is right across the highway from the development. And I just want to say, this is a great project. I can claim some credit to bringing the 300 Committee and the Housing Trust together. And there are some issues, though, I think you should be aware of. And this is... These are issues that the town's going to be dealing with in the future regarding freshwater ponds in town. And as I hope some of you know, nitrogen is a limiting agent for saltwater. In other words, nitrogen stimulates growth of algae in saltwater. Phosphorus stimulates growth of algae in freshwater. And what we're finding is a lot of our freshwater ponds are becoming eutrophic. They're developing blooms of cyanobacteria, as has this one not too recently. Actually, recently. I don't know why I said that. It Born Pond is a beautiful little pond. It's an environmental gem in the middle of Wacoit. It's got walking paths. It's a beautiful wooded area surrounded by beech trees, which are the original trees that grew in this area. But as I mentioned earlier, it's showing distress from nutrient loading with the current development. We can address this, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future. This area will be sewed and these homes would have to be connected to the sewer. But that's still probably 20 years away before the sewer gets down to our area. There are... I just want to mention, too, that, you know, it's great. It's a denitrifying septic system that they're putting in. And I heard 19 milligrams per liter. We have to get to 10 milligrams per liter, okay? So this isn't the end-all. This isn't the perfect situation. What would be a good way of addressing the phosphorus is with a new IA system that does both, take out nitrogen and phosphorus. I don't know if those exist yet. We do know that urine diversion does take out all of it, okay? Takes out phosphorus, takes out nitrogen. And you know about the town's struggles to get a project started here so we can prove the viability of this once and for all. And we're waiting for the state to come up with the approvals that are necessary. I'm heartened to see that the Housing Trust has gone with the IA systems, D-Nite systems. But as I said earlier, if we get approval for anything else that takes out the phosphorus, I hope you will respond. Because this is a freshwater, 10 acres, beautiful pond. I taught my kids how to swim in it. You know, it's... When that area had to be cleaned out from the highway, you know, the walking path just to the west of the project, you know, I recruited my friends in the neighborhood. We went down there and helped them clean out a nasty junkyard that was there. So the neighborhood knows about it. We're invested in it. We love it. And I hope you keep things... Keep this in mind going forward. So if it is possible, we can save this pond from further deterioration.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public?
Evening. Richard Johnson, One Ambetts Avenue. I also want to applaud the quality of this presentation and design. But one thing that occurs to me is that I appreciate their effort to make all of the houses visitable. I think a lot would... It would be worth a lot to add one pullover space towards the front of the property by that sidewalk so that someone with a mobility handicap could actually park there and use the sidewalk to get into the house. That would solve some of the delivery issues as well. It's a fairly minor and hopefully inexpensive change, but it might be worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Lawrence. I live at 401 Walk White Highway. I'm going to butt into this property and contributed to its purchase. And I would like to compliment you on your presentation and the excellent work that you've done in developing this plan. As you know, we have been a correspondence with alternative ideas about the septic system. And I came up with an idea of blackwater systems, which are similar to what are extant in West Falmouth, but on a year-round basis. And so, I proposed a system in which the septic system is unified in one system and is pumped out by trucks and taken to the sewer system. This would have the advantage of removing all of this phosphorus and all of the nitrogen that, other than it happens in the gray water, which is 10 milliliters or 10 units per liter. And this system that is not currently being considered, and I'm not pushing it forward at this time, but I wanted to stand up before you and tell you of the idea that you could use the system currently being used in West Falmouth on a year-round basis to remove all of the bad things that are going to the water, all of the... Most of the phosphorus and most of the nitrogen, other than that is in the gray water, which is a certain amount. And I just wanted to, again, compliment you on your work and what you've proposed. I just wanted to stand up and say to you this idea, which I have proposed and it's rattling around out there. But I just wanted to say the word "blackwater" again so that we think about it a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else up here have any further questions? All right, I guess we're continuing this. Do we have a date, Marie? Will you give me a motion?
We continue to December 5, 2024.
Second.
There you go. Two seconds and a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
December 5 is looking busy.
December 5.
Thank you very much.
That was great, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Maybe you can teach some other applicants about all of that.
Yeah, you need to give lessons.
Oh, the information's out there. Believe me. Hear that from me, bud.
All right, moving on. Minutes, Stewie. I got found mine. I do use it every week.
So you're good to vote September 26 and October 3?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 26, 2024, and October 3, 2024, as public.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Zoning administrator?
So the board had its Saturday meeting and there was a proposal to meet with the select board. They've replied to us and the select board's currently looking at either their first or second, if they have two, meetings in January. They're currently proposing... We'll get you final details, but that they would meet with us approximately an hour before they commence their regular meeting. So we would be joining them on a Monday night.
In January?
Yep. So as we get something more finalized, we will let you know that.
And they start at 7:00 or 6:00?
I think they start at 6:00 or 6:30. So we would probably meet them approximately 5:00.
Okay.
And I think that's about it.
Board discussion? Anybody have anything? Board updates?
Just a reminder, Madam Chairman, I will not be at the next... The last October meeting or the first week of November. I will be out of the country.
Where you going, New Bedford?
Costa Rica.
Going over the bridge.
Country, not county.
And so whereas Halloween's on a Thursday, but it's officially a holiday, you guys are off. are off for Halloween, so...
Have to be home and handout.
I live in North Hill, so...
You get a million...
Twenty-five bag of candy.
You gotta spend a lot to feed that neighborhood, huh?
Oh, yeah. You live in North Hill, right? Everybody in Falmouth brings their kid there.
Don't people drop kids off up there, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I always brought my daughter there.
First year, we liked it. Are you serious? It lasted like 45 minutes.
We'll look them through the cabinets. What do we have?
We shut, we turned all the lights off and snuck out the back door.
Cliché de guinée. All right, and future agenda items. Don't go to Nick's House family. There you go.
Next meeting?
Oh, yes, next meeting is October 24 at 6:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn and go away.
How are we going to decide what we want to talk to the selectmen about?
Oh, well, it's not till January, but we could email...
Sounds like a good future agenda item.
Well, all right, no, but we should have some time with input from everybody as to what we're going to talk about.
Yeah, I think one of the prime targets or goals is the current status of the affordable housing and what the select board plans to do about petitioners that are asking for LIPS or not, meaning the local initiative petitions. Now that the town has hit 10% and has a two-year safe harbor, there's some question about which applications are going to be moving forward, or how you're going to be addressing those, so...
Sounds like a lip service issue.
So, I guess if there's other items, do let me know, but I think that seems to be the prime target.
Yeah, that can't be the only one. In an hour, we can cover a lot.
Not necessarily.
No. This meeting could take up a lot of time.
Yeah, because, you know, essentially for LIP applications, the intent is that the select board is supporting the application. But beyond that, when you look at what the CMR provides, it intends that the select board is essentially a partner in the application, and that they strongly support versus, you know, somebody saying, "Hey, I'm good with you going forward." So, I think, you know, there's probably some details people may want to discuss.
So, if we disagree, does that mean we are not using appropriate judgment? Or they have better judgment? I don't understand why that carries weight.
Well, so, two factors. First of all, the CMRs clearly identify that it is the zoning board's decision about 40B applications. That being said, the state also has provisions for these local initiative petitions, and there is an expectation that this is, this board is going to have a certain amount of weight assigned to the fact that the select board is supporting the applications coming before you.
Deference, but not controlling. But they are appointing authority.
But the LIPS have very limited information that has been given to the select board.
They still need to be looked at for the, you know, in greater detail.
Right, so, obviously, they're not reviewing it at the level you are, but I think there should be some understanding about the roles and the expectations.
Okay. In Frank's point, we can kind of frame some of that up so that they can understand the positions that we're looking at, correct? Pride to the meeting?
Yeah, we could probably send them something. That's a good idea.
We should send them our agenda like two weeks at least before the meeting.
It's a good idea. On Christmas, you can draw it up. Have that day off.
So, I think if there are specific points that you want to bring up, that you want me to send to them, please feel free to send them. I would limit the number of topics that you raise because I think you really, you know, this topic is worth the time to spend.
Yeah, I agree.
We got two months to consider it.
All right, Mark made the motion. We had a second. All those in favor of the big one?
Aye.
Aye, and bye-bye.
We're done.